All right, welcome everyone. Thank you again for attending this forum as well for city council candidates. My name's Mary Rice. I'm president of the Bloomington League of Women Voters. And the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that never endorses or supports any political party or candidate. And our purpose and our function in hosting this forum is to provide you, the public, with the opportunity to learn more about the candidates and what they stand for so that you can make an informed voting decision. Your votes, your power, and will result in your voice being heard. Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th. And early voting is available here at Civic Plaza, right here in city council chambers, starting on Friday. We hope that this forum, as well as the candidate videos that have been and will be posted on our website, and also the website of the city, and that will be played on Bloomington TV, will also provide you with information that you need to make an informed voting decision. I want to thank the audience for attending tonight. I want to thank the volunteers and the League of Women Voters for putting this forum together. I do want to point out our card collectors. Could you wave your arms? Write any questions you have, please, on cards. And wave the card, and the card collectors will collect them. And then what will happen is the cards will go to the card sorters, and the card sorters will go through every card and try to organize them so that every issue gets addressed. If an issue does not get addressed, that's because of lack of time, and please contact the candidates directly after the forum. So we would ask that the members of the audience not clap, cheer, or otherwise do anything that might disrupt the process of the forum. And also, I want to thank the city of Bloomington for the use of council chambers. I want to thank Bloomington TV for recording and broadcasting this forum tonight. Before introducing our moderator, I also want to make reference and point you to the exhibit, the panel exhibit that is outside council chambers. The exhibit was created by the League of Women Voters of Minnesota and the Minnesota Historical Society, and it celebrates the centennial of the ratification of the 19th Amendment by the state of Minnesota. So it's a good exhibit. It goes over the history of voting rights and of the struggle for passage of that amendment, and it goes over what's happened since and what's still going on. So it's an excellent exhibit. So with that, I would like to introduce you to our moderator, Debbie McNeil. Debbie is a member of the Edina League of Women Voters. She is past president, and she's an extremely experienced moderator, and we're lucky to have her here tonight. So Debbie will now clarify the issues of the forum, and we'll introduce the candidates and get the forum started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you all for attending tonight's candidate forum for Bloomington City Council. The purpose of the forum tonight is for you, the voters, to hear the Bloomington City Council candidates at large, and the candidates for District 1, and the candidates for District 2, discuss issues that are important to you. We are going to try and cover as many issues as possible in the time we have. And if we don't get to your issue or question, please contact the candidates afterwards directly. The views that are expressed in this forum are going to be those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Bloomington, and the fact that the League sponsors this forum doesn't indicate their support for any candidate. For city council at large and for council District 1, all the candidates who advanced to the general election after the primary were invited to the forum. And for council District 2, both the candidates who filed for office were invited to the forum, because my understanding is there wasn't a primary for that race. Here are the rules for tonight's forum. The speaking order was set before the forum, and it will rotate with each question. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for their opening remarks and one minute for closing remarks. And each candidate will have one minute to answer each question from the audience. And the League volunteers, who are sitting in front of you, candidates, here in the blue t-shirts, the blue League t-shirts, will time your responses and are going to hold up signs. They're going to hold up the green one-minute sign, the green 30-second sign, and most important, the red stop sign. And would you please obey the stop sign when you see it? We're also going to perhaps have one or more lightning rounds where we'll ask you to answer a question very briefly, like maybe even yes or no. And all of you will have the chance to answer those questions. So, audience, please write your questions on note cards and hand them to a League volunteer. And I will ask all the questions. League of Women Voters Bloomington determines which questions will be asked, and they attempt in good faith to cover the topics of interest indicated by the submitted audience questions. All the written questions become the property of the League of Women Voters Bloomington. No campaign materials are allowed in the forum room. And the forum is being video recorded, so I ask you to hold your applause, as Mary did, until the end of the forum. Candidates, you want to speak directly into the microphones, and you want to look at the audience, not at me, even though I asked you a question, because when it's video recorded, you want your, you know, your front of your face to be seen on the video. Here are the candidates. Let me introduce you to the candidates for city council who are appearing tonight. The candidates for council at large are Jenna Carter and Brian Clem Clemons. The candidates for District 1 are Dwayne Loman and Al Nord. And the candidates for District 2 are Shawn Nelson and Susan Woodruff. So let's start, candidates, with opening remarks, and each of you has one and a half minutes. And I think we'll just start with Jenna Carter, and we'll just continue down the line. I'll call on each of you, but you can just plan on going straight down the line for this. Okay, so Jenna Carter, your opening remarks for one and a half minutes.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Jenna Carter, and I'm running for the at-large seat. I'm very, I'm thrilled to be here tonight with all of you. Thank you for coming out. It's a warm, almost summer-like day, and it's warm in here, too, so thanks for pushing through and staying for a couple hours. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters Bloomington. It's a volunteer-run organization, so thank you for all you do, all the work you're doing in our community to increase voter engagement. So I live in Bloomington with my husband, Mike, and our two kids, Dylan, who is nine, and Evelyn, who is five. I grew up a military brat. Both my parents were active duty until I was in high school. I then graduated from a small town in Iowa, and then went on to Iowa State to get my undergraduate degree, and I was the first person in my family to do that. About 11 years ago, I decided to come up to the University of Minnesota and get my graduate degree. And for over 10 years now, I have been working with communities across our state to really ensure that Minnesota is a place where everyone has the opportunity to live healthy and well and thrive. And I've done that through deep relationship building and community engagement, building partnerships and coalitions that are cross-sector, and really building bridges across differences so that we can come together around common good solutions. So I want to thank you all again. Oh, excuse me. I also want to mention that I'm on the Board of Directors for Veep, one of our local nonprofits. I've been involved with the Bloomington Housing Coalition, and I volunteer in our schools. So I'm running for Bloomington City Council because I believe that Bloomington is an exceptional community, and I know that we can be even better. So thank you all again for coming tonight. I look forward to this conversation.
Brian Clem Clemons, your opening remarks.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, obviously, for putting this together. My name is Brian Clemons. Most people call me Clem. I've been a member of the Bloomington community my entire life, so 44-plus years. The last 19 and a half of those, I have been a fireman in the city of Bloomington, so getting close to putting my 20 in there. Community service has always been part of what I do throughout my life. I've done volunteering, and I still volunteer at my daughter's school. I also run a charity for St. Jude's Children Hospital in honor of my late brother. We've raised over $50,000 in the last two years for St. Jude's, and we plan to keep on doing that. So obviously, giving back to the community is something that's very passionate in my, in my life. You know, when we look at the city of Bloomington and this position and the importance of this election, what I'm hoping to do is encourage more and more voters to get out and vote this year. Four years ago, the mayor election was 7,900 people that voted. Two years ago, it was about 14,000 people that voted for your city council members. So the message that I want to get out is that with 55,000 registered voters in the city of Bloomington, if only 7,000 to 14,000 of them show up, your voices aren't being heard. So hopefully, what you hear tonight will encourage you to get out and vote and make Bloomington what you want it to be. Thank you.
Now the candidates for city council District 1, opening remarks, starting with Dwayne Loman.
Thank you. And I want to thank my fellow members of the League of Women Voters, which I'm a member of, and also want to thank the residents of the 1st District for twice electing me to be their representative. It's been an honor to serve the 1st District. I also want to thank the police department, the fire department, and our veterans for their service to our country. What I am focused on moving forward is cultivating a community of choice. Now, I'm going to probably be a father here soon, here in the next fall here, and it was just, last week, I was down at the fire station with my wife as we installed the car seat. I learned how to do that. A fireman taught me how to do. And so what that, to me, is about the future. What is the future of our city going to look like? And then I also remember a mayor telling me just over here in this hallway over here, down in the bricks there, there's the river. A whole, there's a picture there of the river, Minnesota. And that reminds me about the sustainability of our reputation and our community's natural resources. When we think about our history of this city, we've got so many different things that we value and so many things that we're about. We are, in fact, One Bloomington. And really, what the question that we have to ask for us today in this election is, do we want to stick with that direction? And that's the conversation I'm hoping that we're going to have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Nord, your opening remarks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Al Nord. I'm running for District 1. I've been a lifelong resident of Bloomington. I have a business that's also located here in Bloomington. It's just down the road. It's a metal fabrication business. I've been married for 23 years. I have two children. One is a freshman at Mankato State this year, and the other is a senior at Kennedy High School. I'm running because I feel that the small businesses in this town don't have good representation on the city council, so I would really like to try to bring these people back into the fold and get more of their opinion on how this city should be run. I look forward to this forum and answering some of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The candidates for city council District 2, starting with Shawn Nelson.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Shawn Nelson, and I'm running for reelection to the District 2 city council seat. It's been truly an honor to serve our community for the last two years. I've lived in Bloomington for 20 years. This has been a wonderful community for my wife and I to raise our two daughters, who are now teenagers. When I first ran two years ago, I talked about making sure that the city focused as much on our neighborhoods as they do about the high-growth areas around the mall and along 494. In these past two years, we have focused on improvements at many of our neighborhood parks, including tennis courts and trails at Sunrise Park and pickleball at Westwood, just to name a few. We created an Opportunity Housing Ordinance to reduce barriers to development in appropriate locations, and a Gateway District Plan. Together, these are bringing energy, focus, and resources to many of the oldest neighborhoods in our community. We have identified eight neighborhood commercial areas to target for revitalization, including Countryside and Amsted and District 2. And we are making progress on restaurant, food truck, and taproom regulations to bring in new options for all of us to enjoy. I will continue to work to meet the needs of seniors in our community, including housing options and transportation. I will work to be a community that attracts families with excellent schools, local restaurants and shops, and engaging community amenities. I believe that I have brought a fresh perspective and have proven to deliver results for our community. Thank you.
Susan Woodruff, your opening remarks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for your time. My parents moved to Bloomington in 1949, hence I did, too. So I'm probably the most Bloomington person in this room tonight. I was at City Hall, where the museum is now, the night that the city charter was signed, and we went from being the village of Bloomington to the city of Bloomington. I remember going home and thinking, wow, we're a city now. My mother and father were anchor businesspeople in this town. My father owned Millhouse Steel Products for 50 years, where we sit now. The city of Bloomington took his life, work, and property when they moved him, removed him from his land. I'm running to protect you from this kind of tyranny. I would be a true advocate if I'm elected.
Thank you. Now we'll go to audience questions. And so we'll rotate the answers, so everybody gets a turn to be in different orders, but they'll be within your particular race that you're running. So we'll start with Al Nord and then Dwayne Loman. We'll start with the council, the District 1 candidates, but you'll all get to answer this question. Here's the question. What are your two most important policy issues that you would like to address as a city council member? Let's start with Al Nord and then Dwayne Loman. And these answers are for a minute each.
My two biggest ones would be keeping our property taxes at a level pace so we're not spending too much money and getting our taxes raised constantly. And then biggest one is creating a better spot for businesses to run in this town, to open up, lowering ordinances and zoning so that new businesses can come in, existing businesses that are here already can expand and grow to keep high-earning jobs here so that people working there can afford the homes in this city. Those would be my two biggest things. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne Loman.
Thank you. Well, I think we've got six strategic priorities, and of those, I have identified two of those, and that is focused renewal. We talk about our Gateway District area that was just sent out in the Bloomington briefing. We've got to focus on, on working with our housing and also on our commercial areas within the heart of our city. And secondarily, I would bring forward sustainability. And I don't mean just environmental sustainability, I'm also talking about economic sustainability. We've got to be sure that we are focused on making sure that our buildings here in the city are examples of where we want to move as a city. And secondarily, how we manage our budget also has to be a representation of what our values are as we move forward. And so I would say that it's really those two priorities that we need to focus on, and we need to move the city forward. And our council has been doing that.
Thank you. Next, Susan Woodruff, followed by Shawn Nelson. The question is, what are your two most important policy issues that you want to address as a city council member?
Well, I guess that I don't want to see taxes go up. I think that we can find ways to cut our spending here at City Hall. I don't know, look, for instance, if, if the million or million and a half dollars has been sent yet to explore community center options has been spent, but I think if we would look at ways to watch our pocketbooks, it would be helpful. And also, I'm very interested in protecting our neighborhoods and not letting too much, too many businesses. I don't want, our streets are full already. I want to keep my neighborhoods or all of our neighborhoods as intact as possible.
Shawn Nelson.
Yeah, thank you for the question. My top priority is what, is focusing on what a city's basic services are and making sure we provide those with excellence in a financially responsible way. So the top budget priorities we have are police, fire, park and rec, and public works. And we have to do that in an environment where we need to be mindful that a lot of our facilities and infrastructure is older. We have fire stations that we need to reinvest in. We have pipes underneath the ground that carry our award-winning water and the other part back that we need to make sure we take care of. We, my second priority would be looking at how we encourage more small businesses, local businesses, innovative businesses to locate within Bloomington here. So what ordinances do we need to be looking at to encourage and kind of unleash the private sector to provide restaurants, shops, things like that in our neighborhoods? And we're starting to work on some of those ordinances.
Thank you. Next, the candidates for council at large, Brian Clem Clemons first, and then Jenna Carter. And the question is, what are your two most important policy priorities that you'd like to address as a city council member? So starting with Brian Clem Clemons.
Sure, thank you. You know, it's, it's funny, it's hard for us to pick out of all the things we want to do, but we'll try and narrow it down for you. For me, transportation is a huge issue in our town. And looking at, just trying to get from one side of town to the other, the loss of on-street lanes for bikes. I'm all for biking. I'm all for supporting bikers. On the west side of Bloomington, I see the bike paths get put six feet off the road. On the east side, they get put on the road. So there's some disparities in how those things are being dealt with as well. You know, I'll tell you the story of a fireman at my fire station that delivers, drives truck for a living. He had to cut from five deliveries down to four because he can't get across town. That's a 20% pay cut for him because of the transportation issues. The second one would be fiscal responsibility. We're looking at over $200 million in spending in the next couple of years that's on the table, and that is way more than we can afford. So we need to be smart about what we're spending in our money and how much we spend. Thanks.
Jenna Carter.
Yeah, so I think it's really, often in, in the policy discussions, I feel like we do kind of pick specific issues or specific projects that are underway. And my priority really is to bring a holistic view as we think about these issues. Transportation is critically important. Housing is critically important. Economic development is critically important, and they all intersect and they impact each other. And so we need to start thinking about our policy decisions in a really holistic and comprehensive way, because we can't silo these issues, and we can't separate them from each other. And then related to that, another big top priority for me is really around community engagement. And as we think about this comprehensive vision that we want for our community, you know, we need to be really clear about what our priorities are. The community should be engaged in figuring out what those priorities are, and then our budget decisions should reflect those priorities.
Here's the next question, and we'll start with Shawn Nelson and Susan Woodruff. What would you advocate doing to improve the business climate in Bloomington? Starting with Shawn Nelson.
Well, first of all, I'd like to mention that I am a small business owner. I own two companies and have business degrees. My undergraduate degree is from Valparaiso University. I got my master's degree from St. Thomas. I've, I'm on the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, have been for several years. I've been a leader within the housing industry, so I work every day with small businesses. And a lot of what we are doing right now is taking a look kind of industry by industry of what regulations we have that are creating barriers. We did that with housing, an industry that I know very well, and we did some things that frankly, I think the housing industry at first was like, wait a minute, that's going maybe a little bit too far. The important thing that I think Bloomington did, and it's very unique, is we reached out to not only the, the people that are cosburning in housing, the advocates, but the builders and the developers, and asked, how do we get this to work? And we all worked together to create something that would work. We're doing that with restaurants and food trucks now. We can continue to do that with elder industries, hospitality and things like that. We have a model that works.
Susan Woodruff, what would you advocate doing to improve the business climate in Bloomington?
Well, we have to treat them as customers and think, how can we help you? They're doing us a favor by moving into our community to do business and by putting so many obstacles up against people. I know of one guy that had to build a $50,000 shed to put his garbage in. I know somebody else that had to put in a $12,000 stainless steel tubs to wash his coffee pot. So I think the city of Bloomington can be difficult with people that want to move into town, and we have a lot of vacant, vacant buildings, so we need to figure out how to make that happen.
Jenna Carter, what would you advocate to improve the business climate in Bloomington?
Yeah, so I sat on the leadership team for the Bloomington Housing Coalition as the Opportunity Housing Ordinance was created, and I really, I really think highly of the process that was undertaken by the city. You know, our Director of Development was engaging with residents, with tenants, with the business community. And I think because of that, we got a policy that is really, I mean, it's being looked at now across the nation as incredibly innovative and something that could really start to work to address the cost of housing in Bloomington. I think that's exactly the type of approach that we should take with the business, the issue we have with getting businesses to come to Bloomington. We know we have regulations in place that are really preventing small businesses and developers from coming to Bloomington. We need to go through those with our business partners, with our community members, and figure out what those are, how we can change them, how we can be more business-friendly. And, and then I also want to say, you know, we do ask a lot from business. I mean, I have a public health background, so I kind of understand when you think about the restaurant industry and the regulations and requirements, and how can we provide incentives and really support systems for our business owners.
Brian Clem Clemons, what would you advocate for improving the business climate?
Yeah, I like Susan's story. You had to have a, your friend had to have a shed built. I own an office building off of Syndicate Avenue, and I had to tear a shed down. The shed had been there for 35 years, but I had to take it down because it was too close to the lake that had been there for 50 years. So those are the type of experiences that I have had in many of my friends that I grew up that now run small businesses in town like I do. You know, walk, walk around Bloomington, drive around Bloomington, and you see so many empty storefronts and so many blighted buildings that are empty that used to be thriving places. And until we can find a way to encourage businesses to go into these places and be able to function as they fix the place up, as opposed to having to put millions of dollars in just to open the doors, come up with a three-to-five-year plan for those improvements so that people can actually afford to move in, start a business, and fix those places up rather than leaving them empty for 10 to 20 years, that, that's a big piece for me. So it's absolutely, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance was a great start, and I think I mentioned first at the Chamber of Commerce meeting last week, you know, that coming up with a new ordinance for businesses in the same fashion would be a great idea for the city.
Dwayne Loman, what do you advocate for improving the business climate?
Well, thank you. I asked my dad and my mom, who both owned a restaurant, and they said it's a lot like marriage. You got to learn how to listen and communicate. That's the thing we really need to focus in on. And when we look at the last 2019 survey, 1st District residents believe that the overall economic health of Bloomington is strong. Over 86% of those folks in that survey found that that's what they believed. But it's not just about doing that. It's about managing our high-quality services that we provide out in our community. It's making sure that we manage our budget and those services and striking that balance between that. And also, finally, it's about making sure that we have educated workers that are out there. So that means we need to continue our dialogue that we have with our public schools, our community college, and also with our various other forms of government.
Al Nord, what do you advocate for improving the business climate?
Well, just like Sue and Clem, I was just talking with a friend of mine that owns a building in town, and he was just going to switch out his metal halide lights on the out, on his outdoor lighting of his building, and the city wouldn't let him put up the $350 LED he wanted to put up. They have to, they said he had to put up this $1,100 light, and that can get quite expensive when you're going to put up, you know, 10, 12, 20 lights on a building. I would advocate more for smaller businesses, you know, owner-operator type businesses, guys that are running out of their trucks and trailers, and, and there's just not quality outdoor storage anywhere in the city for them because of the zoning regulations that the city's put on them. So I'd like to see some different zoning ordinances put in.
Here's the next question, and we'll start with answers from Dwayne Loman and Al Nord. Does Bloomington have a homeless problem? And if so, how is this associated with affordable housing? How would you address each issue in one minute?
Are you kidding?
Well, take a stab at it. Dwayne Loman, would you be willing to start? The question again is, does Bloomington have a homeless problem? What's the association with that and affordable housing? And how would you address homelessness and affordable housing?
All in one minute. Wow, unbelievable. Okay. We'll give her a shot. So what I would say is this, is that, first of all, yes, we do have an issue, especially with youth homelessness. Every year, I have the opportunity to speak at the Oasis for Youth, and that's really where I think this conversation needs to begin. It's not so much that what we, as government, needs to do, we need to also be a part of that conversation, but it's what all of us can do as residents to help resolve this problem. And when we look at affordable housing, it is, it is a solution to that, but I think there are some unfortunate folks kind of tie those two things together, that homelessness and affordable housing, you know, are a problem. But sometimes what folks end up utilizing or being homeless has nothing to do with affordability. It may be their own family circumstances or situations. So this is a very complex issue to try to dive into, and there's a stop sign there.
Thank you. Al Nord, homelessness and associated with affordable housing, and do you have any comments on addressing each issue?
I do. This homeless issue came up- Uh, this homeless issue came up during the primary, um, forum, and I totally bombed out on it because I was not informed at all. So I've, uh, looked into it quite a bit, and it's, uh, it's fascinating. You know, the homeless children are really the, the invisible homeless of the community. You mean, you don't really notice they're there or if they're not there because they're usually staying maybe at a relative's or couch surfing friends' houses from here to there. So you don't really realize what the, how many there are out there. Um, I did look into the Oasis for Youth, it's a fantastic program that we have going. Um, and, uh, I looked into, AVEEP does a great job supplying food packs for kids on, you know, Friday food packs, they call them. Um, it's amazing, I, that, how much this community has really reached out to the homeless youth. Um, and as far as affordable housing, trying to help the homeless, um, since usually homeless are going to be your extremely low-income people, there's really not a lot of that in this city, so I have to stop now.
Tough, isn't it?
Brian Clem Clemmons, um, does Bloomington have a homeless problem? And is that associated with affordable housing? And if so, how? And would you like to comment on each issue?
Sure. Um, obviously, there are homeless people in Bloomington. Um, you know, when you talk about affordable housing, I think the problem is the understanding of affordable housing within our community. Affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean always a, a voucher program through the county. That can just mean someone who's making 60% of the average median income within here, or 80% for ownership, or if, you know, 50 or 60 or 30% for a rental perspective. So it's not the poorest of the poor. A lot of, a lot of those folks are in the middle. And so it's, it's, uh, looking at affordable housing is something we need to do. It needs to be done in balance. Right now, we have a couple of projects that are 100% affordable. I don't think that that's great for our city either. I think it needs to be, uh, mixed-income housing with some affordable units surrounded by, uh, market-rate units. When we talk about high density and when it comes to, uh, housing, then we need to have some, some affordable units along with some market units there as well. Also, we should look, work with the school board as the largest landowner to figure out if there's a way to create some type of housing with local developers for the youth that are out of school. Thanks.
Thank you. Jenna Carter?
So we absolutely have a homeless issue happening in Bloomington. It's actually one of the biggest reasons I decided to, uh, jump into this race. So in my conversations with, um, housing advocates, in my conversations with the social workers at the school district, and we have significantly increasing rates of student homelessness. And I just have to say, Al, this brings a tear to my eye, because when, when I decided to run, I really wanted to make this, I wanted to make sure this was a campaign issue, that we were talking about this, that we are building awareness around this issue. And so I'm really glad that it came up today because we have to address it as a community. It is not just a, an affordable housing issue. It really is broader than that, and we need to build a coalition in Bloomington with multiple stakeholders, with residents, with the people most impacted. I mean, let's talk to our students. Let's figure out what's going on in their life. Let's talk to parents. And so, um, so I was distracted by the waving flag, but, um, and, or the waving card. But yes, so it is an issue. We need to really come up with a comprehensive solution, um, where we engage partners across our city.
Susan Woodruff, does Bloomington have a homeless problem? And is this associated with affordable housing? And, um, would you like to address these issues?
I'm sure we do. I, I don't know if any of us see it on a daily basis. I know I don't, and I get around this town. But, um, we have to identify them, and we have to, uh, evaluate their problems. We have to help them get employment or get through school, um, maybe have a bridging where we have temporary housing for them till they can get jobs, get stable. I don't know if the churches could do that. I don't know if we could build, uh, efficiency apartments that would be very low-cost, you know, $300, $400 a month. I, I'm not sure how to tackle it. The problem is so broad.
Shawn Nelson?
Yes, we have a, a homeless problem in, uh, Bloomington, and it is exacerbated by affordable housing. Uh, we have been working on affordable housing for a couple of years. One of the big challenges we run into is the pace of increase of, uh, rental rates is far greater than incomes are increasing. Uh, so we continue to lose affordable properties within our community. Um, and that's, that's a big challenge that we gotta get our arms around. Uh, the, um, a lot of what we have done as a council so far is more addressed workforce housing than that, uh, need for those that truly are at the lower income levels that are at risk of becoming homeless. And, um, I do think that it's important to discuss, uh, mental health with regards to this as well. Uh, that is an issue that our city is starting to tackle as well, both on our police force with how they interact with the public, but also importantly, through our public health department, and how they're able to provide and connect people to resources within our community. And I'm excited about those opportunities. This is a serious issue that we need to work on.
So, um, let's take a break from long answers and try answering a question in one word, like yes or no. So this will be a lightning round, and, um, I think we'll just go right down the row, starting with Jenna Carter. Here's the question. Are you in favor of amending the city charter to allow the city council to pass ordinances that would allow the establishment of microbreweries and similar establishments in Bloomington? Uh, this is a paraphrase of a ballot question that will be on the November ballot. You want to hear it again? Um, do you favor amending the city charter to allow the city council to pass ordinances, um, that would permit the establishment of microbreweries and similar establishments in Bloomington? So, do you want to amend the city charter so that the city council would be able to establish microbreweries and similar establishments in Bloomington? Can you answer yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, yes, I guess.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, why not?
Thank you. Thank you for being good sports about that. Okay, let's go back to questions that you can answer in more than one word. So let's start with Susan Woodruff and Shawn Nelson for this next question, which will be, um, for one minute. How can the city increase engagement by, uh, residents of color and recent immigrants, um, in city life and city affairs such as this event? Let me do that again. How can the city increase the engagement by, uh, people of color and recent immigrants in the life of Bloomington and in the life of, uh, and in Bloomington city affairs, um, like this event?
Well, first of all, you have to get the word out to people. They have to know that it's happening. Um, one thing is, of course, to reach out to them. Um, another thing is to get them engaged in, in activities, most especially sports, uh, where, um, whoever has got any ability at all can play the game. Um, I, and I guess that, uh, dance is at the new city hall. Uh, it's, it's not easy to reach out in that respect, or I mean, it is, but, um, most of us live our own lives and we have a, you know, a group of 20 people or so that we know, and it's, it's a difficult thing to try to deal with. But just activities that are made known.
Shawn Nelson?
Yeah, I, I'm proud of the work that we've started to do in this area. Um, we formed, uh, outreach and engagement, uh, group within the city that is working, um, to, uh, to reach out to exactly these groups, these underrepresented groups that have not historically been involved, and we're trying to get them involved at the city level in various ways, through commissions and task force and things like that. But also importantly, we're looking at our hiring practices. We have programs like Pathway to Policing and things like that to bring people in so that our, our, um, workforce looks like our community as well. Uh, beyond that, I think that we can do a better job of doing things in multiple languages so that it's available and people understand what decisions are before us, um, giving notices about meetings and things like that, um, where necessary and appropriate, having translators and things like that, if, if we could help people. Uh, we have to build trust. You know, our police force is reaching out, doing coffee with a cop, tacos with a cop. All of these types of activities help us to reach out and, uh, build that trust within our community. Um, and I have more ideas, but I guess I'm out of time, so thank you.
You have more ideas?
Yeah.
Jenna Carter?
Yeah, can you repeat the question again?
Sure.
Make sure I answer it.
Yeah. How can Bloomington increase engagement by people of color and recent immigrants in the life of the city and in city affairs?
Yeah, so I think this is a really big question. I do look at the leadership of our city when you think of the council, our boards and commissions, um, and we do need to really make sure that we have systems and processes in place. Um, and when you look at our staff makeup, um, systems and processes in place, um, where people are able to, um, navigate the system easily, get into, uh, the boards and commissions or, um, into, I'm sorry, excuse me, um, are able to, um, understand where, you know, jobs are posted. I mean, our systems in our city sometimes are not super easily accessible for people. I mean, I am a middle-income white woman with a master's degree, and I have struggled with some of the systems and the processes that we have, um, especially as it relates to things like our boards and commissions. I think another really big thing is building relationships with people, building relationships with organizations that are serving our diverse communities in Bloomington. They are here, and that is where people feel the trust, and that's what this is really about. Building trust with the communities across our city. And we have a really diverse city, and, um, I do believe that our leadership, this room, um, you know, throughout, oh, sorry, um, we, it should be reflective of our community.
Brian Clem Clemmons?
Uh, as a white male that grew up in the suburbs, uh, this is something I'm learning about every day, and I'm trying to educate myself. But, uh, everything from our education system, uh, through not just making opportunities available, but actually reaching out to communities and letting them know that we want participation from, from, uh, black and brown people that have come to our town. So, you know, it's, uh, you, you look at a, you look at a school system that, uh, if someone is bilingual walking in, they force them to stop speaking Spanish, should only speak English, but for white people, they want them to learn a second language as they go through school. Just simple little things of the way the system is set up make it so that it can feel extremely hard for people who don't look like me to actually, um, feel welcome. But, uh, I don't have all the answers. I'm trying to learn more about it, but I think actually reaching out and letting, letting black and brown people know that we want their involvement and we want them to be part of our community is a different message than just saying, hey, come and find it.
Al Nord?
I think it, uh, comes down to the city needs to really reach out, um, to these people, um, letting them know what's going on. But I think it's a bigger thing is us, the citizens, reaching out as a community with the people that we're working with right now, that telling them what's going on, asking them to show up at certain things like this. I've, I run into lots of different people in the course of the week at my business when they bring stuff in for me to repair, and, uh, I tell them, I inform them, but they're not really interested in showing up. So we just gotta somehow get them to see that they're accepted no matter who they are.
Dwayne Lohman?
I like this question. This question's about Bloomington. How can Bloomington not just the, the council? Well, you know, Kelly and I both belong to a diverse, uh, uh, family. Kelly's a Green Bay Packer fan, and I'm a Vikings fan. And really, when you look at, at teams, and I've, I've been a part of teams, and being part of councils is about being a part of a team, um, you, you have mentorships. I like the mentorships that I had when I was in Rotary. Uh, I was the very first, uh, uh, person, uh, who looks like me that was able to go overseas to, to represent, uh, the Rotary. Uh, those are the types of things we need to, to move forward. That's why the, the council, the team, we put together the strategic priority around inclusion and, uh, and, uh, equity and inclusion. Um, we've been a part of programs like the Bloomington Learn to Lead. Um, that's, uh, a, a program that allows, uh, young folks to have those mentorship, uh, experiences. It's, it's the students that come before this council. It's, it's also about, uh, getting folks to, to be involved on all of our commissions and, and to be a part of that. Uh, and by the way, our pathways to policing was award-winning.
Here's the next question, and for this, the answers will start with Brian Clem Clemmons and Jenna Carter. What policies should the Bloomington police follow in order to be proactive and avoid inappropriate interactions with people in crisis, people of color, and people who may be mentally ill? What policies should the Bloomington police follow to be proactive and so they avoid inappropriate interactions with people in crisis, people of color, and those who may be mentally ill? Can we start with Brian Clem Clemmons?
Yeah, we, we certainly can. I don't know that a minute can cover that either. Um, I, I gotta say, you know, first and foremost, um, you know, this is about safety of the public, and that includes our police officers. They need to be able to operate in a safe fashion. They also need to be well-trained. Um, I do at times have hesitations with the pathway program based on, you know, uh, a different amount of schooling for those officers, and I think that we need to make sure we look at that. When it comes to working within the community in crisis situations, I can't pretend to understand how scary that is, but I know that mental health is a huge issue, as Shawn mentioned earlier. Trying to find folks before they get to that level and that situation, and reaching out with, uh, potentially more, uh, public health efforts from the community is one way to handle that. And again, training and exposure for our police to be able to identify, uh, what, what's truly dangerous and what isn't. It's an impossible question to answer in a minute, but work needs to be done. There's no doubt about that.
Jenna Carter?
I do agree that it's an impossible question to answer in one minute, and it's hard to really group those, those categories. I think, would you say people of color?
The question asks, um, people in crisis, uh, people of color, and those who may be mentally ill.
Yeah, so I think that those are three different strategies. I will say it's critically important to make sure that our police officers have the resources and the training that they need. I also have heard a lot about programs that are starting where they're partnering police officers with mental health professionals, um, to, and a lot of times, these mental health professionals can be a shared resource between police departments, so that when we do see these, when, when these crisis situations occur, like we recently did see, our Bloomington police officers involved in, you know, we have systems in place, and we have the resources in place to make sure that we are, you know, really mitigating, um, the really devastating conf- consequences that can occur, um, when we don't have the proper resources in place to support both our police officers and people who are experiencing a crisis. You know, I'm, I, I think that the, the question around interacting with communities of color and people of color is a different question, um, and I wouldn't want to kind of bucket those two together. And I think that that really comes down to making sure that our police officers are well-trained in terms of bias and systemic racism, and, and so I'll stop.
Shawn Nelson?
Um, I, I'd like to talk about a couple of different things that, uh, I think we need to continue to work on. First is training. We had a couple of days of seminars for our budget, getting prepared for that, and our police department talked about the training that they're going, what's required, and the additional things that they go into that the city of Bloomington is requiring, kind of along the lines of what Jenna was talking about, about implicit bias and things of that nature, uh, de-escalation techniques, those types of things. We are going above mandates to do that training. Um, we are actually working, I believe, with Hennepin County on an embedded, uh, mental health professional that can come out, uh, in a crisis situation to assist our police force. That is in addition to a training that our police force, um, all of our police officers are getting to confront and deal with, uh, mental health crisis and understand what's going on. We've talked about technology that will give people, our police officers, the ability to know if the person they're dealing with has a diagnosis, what that diagnosis is, what might be viable strategies to help that person at that time. So, um, there's, there's a lot we're working on here.
Susan Woodruff?
Um, I guess I don't know how we would have data on somebody's mental health, um, issues or lack thereof, but it sounds like a good idea. Um, I, we definitely need mental health training or psychology courses for our police, uh, department because, um, generally, we're not trained in that, and we are, um, kind of trigger-happy sometimes when I hear about somebody being shot 17 times, um, by police. I think, you know, couldn't you just have wounded him and taken him down? So I think we, we need to make some adjustments in how we handle these things, and, um, I like what everybody else said.
Uh, Dwayne Lohman?
Can I have the question one more time?
Yes. Um, what policies should the Bloomington police follow, uh, to be proactive and avoid inappropriate interactions with people in crisis, people of color, and those who may be mentally ill?
Well, our, our city has a robust amount of policies that we are, are currently, uh, following. And I think this question is both complex and, and simple. But I think what I, I, I want to say, uh, is that I think that at the heart of our police department, they, they kind of try to answer this question. How would you want to have your neighbor treated? And I think that that really is at the heart of, of, of our, our policing policy, uh, in Bloomington. I think about the DARE program that I went through when I was, uh, in elementary school, um, here in Bloomington, and, uh, and how I got a chance to drive a, a squad car right in Bloomington, and how I got a chance to drive a squad car right by the elementary school. It's building those relationships with folks. In our 2019 survey, basically, it said that 95% of folks felt safe in their neighborhoods. That's an important factor to understand. In order, as we look at these folks who are facing these, these situations, they need to feel safe. And that's what our Bloomington Police Department has been working towards and trying to accomplish.
Al Nord.
It comes down to training, just ongoing training for the police officers. I would not want to be a police officer. They have the hardest job ever when they come up on a situation that they have no control over, trying to figure out what's going on with the person they're dealing with. I would think that having a embedded mental health expert in the car with them on calls like that would be a great thing to have, but it just comes down to ongoing training for the police officers.
Here's the next question, and we'll start with Al Nord and Dwayne Lohman. What do you know about the new program acronym? Is it COVER or C-O-V-E-R? And was this program developed in a manner you support and in an environment of sufficient What do you know about the new program whose acronym is COVER, C-O-V-E-R? Was COVER developed in a manner that you support and in an environment of sufficient transparency? Do you want to take a stab at that?
I could take a stab at that because I have no idea what that program is, so I'm thinking the transparency may not have been there. But I, I can't comment on something that I don't know about, so.
Okay, Dwayne Lohman, do you want to comment on it?
Well, this is gonna be an easy one for me as well. I am, when I hear those acronyms, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, with what that, what that exactly is.
Okay. And Susan Woodruff, do you, are you familiar with this program?
Well, I happened to catch it on Nextdoor last Friday. It was announced on social media. COVER is, in fact, I wrote it down, well, I haven't memorized. Crisis or violent extremist report, reporting. And it is a hotline to report people who are in need of mental health services. That means all of us in this room, if we think our neighbor's having a problem, we need to call. And then it's an anonymous tip line, oh, I could go on. It's an anonymous tip line, so even if I'm accused of doing something wrong, I can't even face my accuser in court because it's anonymous, and that's completely against the Constitution. So it's, it's an awful thing as far as I'm concerned because it's borders on spy versus spy or neighbors reporting on neighbors, which has got bad political implications for me.
Sean Nelson, would you like to comment on COVER?
Yeah, I am not extraordinarily familiar with this program. Similarly, have just started to learn about it. I, I do think that that indicates an issue with, in terms of communication prior to the rollout of this, and candidly, it's something I assume that the city council will talk about on Monday.
Jenna Carter, do you want to comment on the program whose acronym is COVER?
So when you asked the question, I had absolutely no idea what you were talking about. Now that Susan provided a little bit, I think I did see something on Facebook or, but I didn't, I didn't know what it was or, you know, any information about it, and so, yeah, apparently not a lot of information or transparency on it.
Okay, okay. And Brian Clem Clemons, do you want to comment?
I'm good, thanks.
Here's the next question, and let's start with Brian Clem Clemons and Jenna Carter. Should the city of Bloomington develop policies that regulate work and labor? Do you think Bloomington should mandate a minimum wage or paid family leave and/or paid family leave?
You'd like me to go first?
If, yeah.
Sure, I can do that. You know, the statistics show that since 1968, the equivalent of minimum wage has, has resulted in lower income compared to the economy. So when you look at that over the last 50 years, something needs to be done to address it. The question itself, at the local level, oftentimes you hear it's better to get out in front and design these things rather than have them forced upon you, but I can tell you that the small business community will be greatly impacted in the short term, for sure. It may adjust over time. We need to look at the number of employees, we need to look at, at the type of business, we need to look at a lot of other things besides just, should we flip the switch on it? Yes, I think people need to get paid more. Forty-eight percent of people making minimum wage are people that are black and brown, and 78% of them are women. So it is an equity issue as well, when you're talking about who's making minimum wage, and they don't look like me. Thanks.
Jenna Carter, do you think Bloomington should develop policies regulating work and labor? Should the city mandate a minimum wage and/or paid family leave?
Yeah, so for the past decade, we've had a pretty decent economy, and a lot of people have benefited from it, but a lot of people have also not benefited. We know that wages have not kept up with inflation, and so as a result, you know, I do think it's a contributor to the increasing rates of homelessness we're seeing. Wilder did a study, Wilder Research did a study recently and released the findings that we've seen a 10% increase just in the past three years in homelessness in the Twin Cities area. And so, you know, wages are a big factor in that. We know that people who are working in, you know, the retail industry, the restaurant, hotels, you know, a lot of the businesses that are the backbone of the Bloomington economy, you know, that are making minimum wage are struggling. You know, they're working in jobs in Bloomington, but they can't afford to live here. They can't afford a two-bedroom apartment in Bloomington. And so this is a conversation that we need to have as a community with multiple stakeholders, our large and our small businesses, our government, our nonprofits, residents, and we can come up with a comprehensive solution that's gonna work for our city.
Dwayne Lohman.
Thank you. This same question came up at the chamber, and I'm, you know, gonna respond to it the same way. I think we need to have a conversation about this. We, we definitely have this as an issue that's coming forward. What's interesting to me is now almost 20 years ago, that, that $15 minimum wage is the same amount of money I was making, I was making only about 12 bucks an hour. And so to me, it seems incredible that we're having the exact same conversation so many years later. Although, we also have to keep in mind that we have many different business interests within the community, and so we need to be sure that we tailor it. And that's why I think that we need to be sure that we're out front on this issue. So we do need to, I believe, as a council, in terms of equity and inclusion, we need to take a step forward on this particular issue and have the discussion and not leave it up to the state actors to decide how we're gonna move forward on this. Because we have a very unique city with many different businesses and many different people. And, you know, it's about being one Bloomington. We need to be welcoming.
Al Nord.
I would be against the city imposing a $15 minimum wage. I think that should be put down to the state, and it should be a market-driven wage. And as far as the Family Leave Act, I think these are things that businesses use to try to bring employees into their businesses instead of forcing it upon a business, because they use it as a, a tool to bring the best, the brightest and the best to them. So I think it should be market-driven, and the city should stay out of it.
Susan Woodruff.
I'm against it because, because first of all, maybe big business, but small businesses perhaps would have to let go of employees in order to maintain that kind of a wage base. And also, I think with baby boomers, I think that era ended in about 1965 they were born. But anyway, they are leaving the work market, and the wages are gonna go up naturally because their employees are gonna be getting desperate to hire people.
Sean Nelson.
I think we need to be realistic about the issue that we're facing. Wages are not keeping up with costs. We have a situation in our housing market where the lowest-priced properties are rising at the fastest price. Our rents are going up, people are struggling to make ends meet, we have people cost-burdened. I'm extraordinarily sympathetic to those families where you have to make a choice about taking care of a kid or a sick parent versus going to work and losing that income stream. And so these are extremely difficult decisions that we need to face that reality and to start to look at tools for that. I am a small business owner, I understand that impact, I understand how difficult it can be, and that needs to be an important part of the conversation. We also need to talk about transportation. How do we connect people to good-paying jobs? Training, how do we get people trained to transfer to jobs that they can make more money on? Yes, we have to talk about the minimum wage, we have to talk about these things. It's a whole toolbox of things that we need to bring to this very, very real problem within our community of people struggling to make ends meet.
Let's take another question, starting with Dwayne Lohman and Al Nord. As a council member, if your own ideas differ from those of your constituents, how would you handle that situation?
Well, I've had that experience many a times, and I think what, what's most important is, is listening. Part of the role of a city council member that I've learned over the last six years is being able to listen to where, to where folks are coming from and being able to clearly be able to articulate those points of view. And I really appreciate that. And I'll give you one example in particular. When we made the decision around our trash hauling position, you know, certainly, all of those different points of view, I was able to integrate and place in to how we made our final decision. So I really welcome folks that have a different point of view and perspective, and if you even look at my campaign and the folks that are involved, you see folks from across many different disciplines, and even those folks who really despise me on that particular issue are now supporting me. And so I think that's a hallmark of my leadership style, is really reaching across and to try to, to try to build that bridge for folks.
Thank you, Al Nord.
I think if you're not having disagreements on the council, then the council's not doing its job, because there should be a multitude of ideas brought forth on any situation. So it's just, you have to listen, you have to talk, we have to be willing to give and take on any issue. So I think just having a conversation and being open to other people's ideas is the way you need to run the council.
Susan Woodruff. As a council member, if your own ideas differ from those of your constituents, how would you handle that?
Well, first of all, I would be taking on the attitude that all these big decisions that are being made are with the approval of the residents of this city. So personally, then, I think that the majority rules would be my attitude as opposed to three, you know, seven people on the council making all the decisions. I think that I would go along with what the people in the city want.
Sean Nelson.
Yeah, and this is an excellent question because it's one of those things about representing people that's, that's extremely important. My priorities are to be open and honest. I hold open Town Hall-type forums where people can come in, share their ideas or thoughts, their concerns. I'm very willing to meet with people. Towards the end of last year, there was an issue that was coming before us where the DNR was actually asking the city to take over some portions of the Minnesota River Bottoms Trail, which was a DNR project, not a city project. And, you know, so I went out and met with people that had concerns about that, because I had concerns about that request. I heard that there were concerns about the Valley View location specifically related to the firemen's softball tournament. I went out to the firemen's softball tournament, I spoke with people, I reached out to the organizer of that, sat down and had coffee with him. It's how I approach this job of listening, being out there, taking it on myself to be the one to reach out, not waiting for people to reach to me, and frankly, being open-minded, that I might be the one that's wrong.
Jenna Carter.
Yeah, so I really love this question. So I think that the idea that we would all be in consensus about something is definitely not realistic. You know, one of my priorities as a candidate has been door-knocking and listening and learning from residents across our city. I have knocked on thousands and thousands of doors, and I can tell you that we have a diverse array of perspectives on a lot of issues. I think oftentimes, you know, sometimes it's, you know, the loudest often kind of have a lot of influence, but we really have people kind of across the board on a lot of issues. And so I want to continue that type of leadership on city council where I'm listening and I'm learning, I'm respecting the voices of a diverse array of people across our community. I'm gonna continue door-knocking when I get on council, because I want to make sure that I have a pulse on the community, that it's not just what is blowing up on social media, that people understand whether they're residents or business owners, they know that they can call me anytime and talk with me, and we can have that respectful relationship.
Brian Clem Clemons.
I think that this speaks largely to what I see as an issue happening with our city council with it becoming more and more partisan. The Bloomington City Council was intended to be nonpartisan, and that's what the charter says, and that's what we're supposed to be. We're supposed to be folks that can find middle ground between two sides and do what's best for the largest amount of people. So obviously, listening to both sides of an argument is extremely important. I've been wrong on a number of occasions. My wife tells me all the time, okay? So, but taking the feedback, you know, I'm, I'm very moderate. I've, I voted Republican, I voted Democrat, I've seen the switch go back and forth over time. It's, it's about what's best for Bloomington, and to see a push to party lines and, and, you know, reading the party playbook and putting that in front of Bloomington, that's where you're gonna start to see issues. You're gonna start to see two extreme sides both yelling for something with nobody in the middle trying to make sense of it. I'm the guy that wants to make sense of it for everybody.
So let's try another lightning round. Do you think this would work? I wonder if you would be willing to state your vision for the city of Bloomington either in a sentence or with some adjectives? Is that possible? Or is that too restricting? If you think it's too restricting, we can do it in, as a regular question. So it's that, what is your vision for the city of Bloomington? Would you rather, candidates, would you rather have more time to talk about that, or can you just put it in a sentence? What do you think?
I can go a sentence.
Give me a longer sentence.
A run-on sentence?
A run-on. Let's try, let's try it for a minute, because otherwise, people are gonna be cramped. So let's start with you, Susan, and we'll just go right down the line, okay? Your vision for the city of Bloomington.
My vision for the city of Bloomington is to protect every blade of grass in this town and not touch anything, to maintain our small-town feel and insulate ourselves from the major growth around us, and I believe that by doing that, we will make ourselves as homeowners and landowners more richer, and by not doing, or by doing too much development, we make the city richer and us poorer.
Sean Nelson.
Let's build neighborhoods where we can eat, shop, and play nearby where we live.
Al Nord.
I'd say growth and businesses and places that we can eat, shop, and play. Sorry for stealing your line.
It's a good line.
Yes, it was good.
Go ahead, you can use it, Dwayne.
Dwayne, Dwayne Lohman.
Thank you. You know, I remember when I was a kid, the next-door neighbor, she was outside and she, you know, started picking up trash out of the, out of the sewer. And I thought, wow, that's something. She goes, when you get older, I want you to remember to do that. And that's really why, what I see as a vision is, we need to cultivate a community of choice. You know, it's, it's not just about, about what city government is doing, it's what we all are doing as a community. You know, we've got, you know, just a, you know, just a large number of folks with just, just dynamic individual, you know, backgrounds. And when we all come together and work together, our, our lives become better. And that's why we, you know, we look at those folks, my, my wife grew up on a farm, my dad grew up on a farm. This city was, was a farming kind of place, and now we've got a new future. And so we've got to figure out where we want to take this city, and that's the choice. And that's why we need to be about, about that. And that is cultivating a community of choice, protecting our, our future by looking to the, looking to the past.
Brian Clem Clemons.
In my head, the word balance comes in. You know, we have an aging population, that's the people that built this town and the people that raised us in this town, and it's the people that I still fall back on when I need something in this town. And so to make sure that we respect the history and heritage of this great city that, that I had the privilege of growing up with, but also respecting the new and younger families that are gonna have to move into town. But I need to keep it suburban. I want Bloomington to stay suburban and not urban. I don't want to see our density go up by 25 or 30% like the Met Council was proposing. Okay? This is a place that we could grow up, we knew our neighbors, they were our friends. I want my kids to know my neighbors and my friends. I don't want everyone to be inside looking at a iPad or a telephone. I want kids outside playing in our parks. I want to protect our green space so people have a place to go to do those things. I don't want to see 25-foot concrete buildings put up in the middle of parks. We need to protect that, but we need to clean up the areas that are rundown, that are empty. We need to get it back to being a bustling community. Thank you.
Jenna Carter.
So I am committed to a community where every single person living here, every single child being raised in Bloomington, has the opportunity to live healthy and well and thrive. And we do that by working together across government, business, our nonprofit communities, our faith institutions, and most importantly, our residents. And we work on things like making sure we have housing options for people across the income spectrum, by making sure that people can get around our communities safely and efficiently, whether they're driving or in public transit, or biking or walking, where we have clean and vibrant parks and green spaces, and where we have really good-paying jobs that are providing families the resources that they need to be able to support themselves and their families.
Thank you for being good sports about that question. Let's try another one. Do you think that Bloomington City Government should cooperate with ICE, Immigration and Customs Enforcement? Why or why not? Can we start with you? Can we start with you, Shawn Nelson? And so this is a minute. This is, you know, yeah, it's not just a yes or no.
Apparently, I was confused on the last question, so. I believe that we should have our Bloomington Police Department focused on laws that relate to Bloomington Police Department. I think that they should not necessarily be the agency that's enforcing other federal laws or agencies in place to do that. I think that we've had a tremendous amount of engagement and outreach to our community in terms of how to engage and how to interact with our police, and we need them to have a positive trusting relationship in order to help us deal with local crimes and things like that. And I don't think they should be doing anything that jeopardizes that trusting relationship with the people in our community.
Susan Woodruff.
Well, this is a federal issue, it is not a municipal issue. And it's my understanding that police can only hold you for 48 hours before they charge you with a crime. So my answer is, it's a federal issue.
Jenna Carter.
Yeah, so I would agree that this is a federal issue. You know, ICE's jurisdiction is at the federal level, and I don't believe that it is the local police force's responsibility or jurisdiction to be enforcing federal law. I do believe it's critically important to make sure that our, that people living here in Bloomington know that they can safely report crimes, know that they are, if they are victims, that they can rely on our police. And, you know, I don't want people living in fear or scared. And so I think that by being really clear, by supporting our police officers, by supporting our police chief in this position, that we are creating a safer community where people feel welcomed and they feel included.
Brian Clem Clemmons.
Yeah, so, you know, since I filed for candidacy, I've had multiple emails asking me if I would make Bloomington a sanctuary city. And I think that's where this is being tossed around. I don't think anyone up here would say that, no, I don't want to do that. But we also need to understand that when you've been pulled over for a speeding violation, how many times have you been asked for your passport or your proof of citizenship? It's not even legal for them to do unless it's a certain level of a crime. So what you're asking is a question that the police actually can't do anyway. And so, and my wife is involved in that part of our society, and I have to tell you that it's not legal for us to do that. I do not think that we should make it easy for everyone to come here if they're illegal. That's not what anyone's saying. But until we start enforcing immigration across the 600,000 white people from Canada and Britain that are here, and Indian, and Chinese, and not just one color of people, we're not doing it justice for anybody.
Al Nord.
Yeah, I would agree that it's a federal issue and that we shouldn't put that to our local police force to try to enforce federal laws because it would make the citizens of the city feel unsafe and less likely to cooperate with law enforcement. So it's a federal issue, and that's where it should stay.
Duane Lohman.
Thank you. The answer to this is obviously no, and here's why. When you look at ICE, they are trained to handle and deal with immigration issues. And if you then ask our Bloomington Police Department to handle that, that just doesn't make sense. They're not trained to be able to handle that and to be able to do that. Certainly, we've heard about the legal ramifications of this, that doesn't make sense. But there's another part of this I think is really important. As we're looking at trying to provide high-quality services, we need to make sure that we're careful about these unfunded mandates. When this stuff kind of comes down from the federal level, state level, whatever level it has, and kind of says, hey, we need to kind of do this, what that does is that creates problems for us when we get ready to try to run our budget. And so we've got to watch these things because they have a, you know, really a chance to really hurt us from your pocketbook standpoint at the local level. So we've got to be ever careful about these things when they come here, and those folks who are properly trained to be able to do their job need to do it.
Thank you very much. Let's try this as yes/no, and start with Jenna Carter. Do you support moving municipal elections to even-numbered years to increase turnout and save money? Do you support moving municipal elections to even-numbered years?
I would be interested in looking into that. Yep. I'd be supportive.
Al, sorry, Brian Clem Clemmons.
Absolutely, 100%.
Duane Lohman. Al Nord.
On the face value of it, yes, I would, but my concern would be that the municipal election might get lost on the bottom of the ballot.
Shawn Nelson.
Interested in exploring it, would like it to be something that's a ballot question if we make a change in any of our election rules.
Susan Woodruff.
I'm not sure either, but he's right about the fact that it might detract from the council race.
Okay, thank you for being good sports about answering briefly. I think we have time for, I'm thinking we have time for one more question before closing. Let's see how this goes. Here's the question, and we'll start with Al Nord and Duane Lohman. What can Bloomington do to be an even-more attractive place to live for people of diverse socioeconomic levels and of all ages? What can Bloomington do to be a more attractive place to live for people of diverse socioeconomic levels and diverse ages? Can we start with you, Al Nord?
I would say creating a more business-friendly environment in the city to attract more workers, higher-paying jobs, and having our excellent education system that the Bloomington has already is already an attraction for a lot of people that come to this city. So just being more inclusive to everyone.
Thank you. Duane Lohman.
I want to hear the question one more time.
Sure. And this is, you know, this is not just answering a word. What can Bloomington do to be a more attractive place to live for people of diverse socioeconomic levels and of all ages?
Well, I think one thing that we could most certainly do is look at this community center that we're proposing. That is, you know, the very heart of that idea. And really, where this kind of stems from is I want to, I don't want to read out all of our six strategic priorities, but that's what we're trying to do. It's not just looking at, you know, the socioeconomic pieces, we've got to look at everybody as we get ready to do that. And so it's about our community image, you know, making sure our image is a place that folks want to be. It's about high-quality services. It's about equity and inclusion. It's about focused renewal. It's about having sustainability across the city, and it's about looking at our community amenities. Really, it's right to the heart of why I'm running, cultivating a community of choice, no matter what income level that you're at, and that's really what the city has been focusing on. That's the direction that we're working towards, that everyone is a part of one Bloomington. And so those are the initiatives that we've gotten, there's so many programs within those.
Jenna Carter.
So, you know, when I think about this question, I think about the fact that people have to be able to afford to live in Bloomington. So this brings me back to the issue around housing and making sure that we have housing options for people across the income spectrum, if the question is about being appealing to people from across the socioeconomic spectrum. And then in terms of ages, you know, I think that there are a lot of young families who are really interested in moving to Bloomington and staying in Bloomington. And we do have to make sure that we have houses in our housing market that, you know, Shawn mentioned it earlier, that the houses that are kind of on the lower end of the spectrum in terms of cost are very quickly rising. And so I have a lot of friends that are looking to move to Bloomington, they simply can't afford it at this point. For the people who are living here, you know, our young families want places to go and to be in community with each other. It's one of the reasons that revitalization of our neighborhood corridors is really important to me, and I think when we go through that process, we have to make sure we're really engaging our neighbors in what we want.
Brian Clem Clemmons.
Could I hear the question, please?
Sure. What can Bloomington do to be a more attractive place to live for people of diverse socioeconomic levels and of all ages?
So I struggle a little with the question is that it sounds to me like we need to completely change who is currently living in Bloomington. So I'm going to take it the other way, I'm going to take it as the people that are living in Bloomington. We need to listen. First and foremost, we need to talk to different groups of community and figure out what they want. It's not for me to decide, it's for me to find out from you what you want. That's first and foremost, okay? Secondly, there's a lot of push for amenities right now with the current leadership and the city manager, and I struggle with that, is that each amenity that we build raises the cost of housing by raising taxes. So the balance between those things, and I've said the word balance a number of times, how do you have great things for people to go and do without making it impossible for people to afford to do them is a huge question for me. And the way that we're looking to spend money right now is not going to make it any more affordable for seniors on a fixed income or people of a lower income. Thanks.
Shawn Nelson.
I got a list of things that I believe we should look at. One is maintaining our neighborhood parks, making sure we're making the investments in those so that people can use and enjoy them. We'll be starting a Parks Master Plan this fall to try to get ideas from the community on how they're using them, how they wish they could be using them. Second item I talked about is transportation. How do we get people around our city so that they can take advantage of those things that are here? Fourth thing I look at is how do we encourage more local shopping and restaurants and things like that in our neighborhoods that people can get to and afford and provide good, decent jobs for people? Jenna mentioned housing. How do we make housing that's affordable for a family, whether, you know, they're making 60% of area median income, 30% or 200%? You know, we need to have housing that fits the needs of residents in our community. Those are just some of the ideas that I think would appeal to a wide range of people and keep our community very attractive.
Susan Woodruff.
Well, I don't think Bloomington is very affordable at all. I would, you know, I would think though that if people were encouraged perhaps to take on roommates, let's say you get two or three people that share a $1,200 a month rent, that gets it down to $400 apiece, that would, you know, make it easier to live here. But also attracting young people to this city, I don't think will be very easy if we build a $75 million community center, and then the taxes go up in very often times when young families are applying for home loans, that 50 extra dollars a month or something, their taxes, the taxes might go up, might prohibit them from moving into our town. So we have to watch that.
I think that's all the time we have for questions. And so now, let's go to your closing remarks. And can we start? We started with Jenna Carter for the opening remarks, so can we start with Susan Woodruff at the other end of the row for the closing remarks, and we'll just go right down the row.
Well, I won't take much time.
Well, you're welcome to have a minute for closing remarks and take as much of it as you like.
Well, thank you for coming out this evening, and thank you for caring. We elect our council people to, and mayor, to do what we think is best for us and not what they think is best for us. If I'm elected, I intend to put the power of this government back into the hands of us, the owners of this city. Thank you.
Shawn Nelson.
First of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters, all the volunteers for that great organization that put these forums on and all the other ways that our community can become informed when they vote. Like to thank all of my fellow candidates for being here tonight. I actually learned a lot from your responses, I appreciate that. Appreciate everyone who came out, everyone who was watching or will watch in the future. City of Bloomington is a wonderful city to live in, it's been a great place to raise our family, it's a great place for my small business. And like I said, I want to work to build a community where we can eat, shop, and play in or near our neighborhoods. I want to work to help new restaurants, new local businesses open up here. I want to make sure we're providing community spaces where kids can play, parents can connect with each others, youth sports can thrive, and residents of all ages can gather, stay fit and stay connected, and really do the work of building a community. I'm going to work hard on housing, transportation, to make sure we're taking care of our seniors as well as attracting new families into our community. I want to continue our strong partnership with the school district, and I look forward to your support this fall. Thank you.
Al Nord.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum and inviting me here. I'd like to thank them for using the council quarters here so I get used to this seat and giving Duane a little bit more memories of being here. But as a small business owner, I deal with other small businesses on a weekly basis, making parts. I make parts for several machine shops in town, I bend up handrails for construction companies. I fix broken equipment for local landscapers and construction businesses, keeping them running smoothly. I can tell you that most of them have lost faith in the city council to the point where you're not going to hear from them because they don't think the council's listening to them anyway. And they certainly did not fill out the survey the city put out. I would like to see the city, I'd like to see Bloomington try to attract more manufacturing jobs using tax incentives and reduced regulations. These are the jobs that tend to be higher-paying and allow their employees to afford the homes in Bloomington. I believe I can help get these people engaged because I understand the daily struggles running a small business that you put your blood, sweat, and tears to. If we continue to disregard these businesses that have one to five employees, then we really have done a disservice to the city. Thank you.
Duane Lohman.
Thank you. It's great to be here and got a feeling I probably going to be back, but, so I hope you enjoy your short stay here. But, you know, really, this is a choice between those who look at the future and want to favor those of the few, and those who want to look for those folks and work for those as a whole. It's important that we make sure that this community continues to be welcoming to all. You know, I remember one of the experiences I had so many years ago when Mary Lou Spies and her husband, who used to be sitting in the chair that I'm in, encouraged me to help and work as a group to help build the Bloomington Clock Tower. This city is full of so many past experiences and so many futures. As I look to that future, I hope that you will come along with me as we cultivate a community of choice in Bloomington. Thank you.
Brian Clem Clemmons.
I think of this town and it's my life, and it's everything that I've ever had. It's where I grew up, it's, I went to six different public schools here and never moved, you know, when the schools closed down. I've been on the fire department for 19 years. I went to school at Normandale to start my collegiate career, just like many of my friends did. I think having that history and understanding what's happened in Bloomington for so many years is an absolute asset to the city council. New people need to be folded into the mix, and they need to understand that, and I love that. But knowing what fireman's means, the fireman softball tournament means for Kennedy High School and the money that those kids get, understanding the St. Bonaventure Fall Festival, and even out here tonight, Angelica Cantante Choir, right? It's been here forever, and these are things that I don't think all the door knocking in the world that can teach you that. So I really want to say, you know, let me represent you, let me listen to all sides, and let me be the person in the middle and not the person at one of the extremes. Thank you.
Jenna Carter.
Well, I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters Bloomington again for all the volunteer work you do and for putting together this fabulous candidate forum tonight. Thank you to the candidates. Agree, learned a lot. And I want to thank all of you for hanging in here, it's been a pretty long evening. So I just want to wrap it up with my top three priorities. The first is addressing the inequities that we see across Bloomington. It's a wonderful city, but there is a 10-year difference in life expectancy for the kids growing up by Kennedy compared to the kids growing up by Jefferson. And so we have to make sure we're having these conversations around housing and transportation and parks and jobs in a very comprehensive and holistic way. My second priority is around reinvestment and redevelopment in our neighborhood corridors. We want thriving hubs where we can all come together as a community. And my third priority is really around community engagement. I've knocked on thousands of doors because there are people from all kinds of backgrounds who have lived here for from one month to, you know, three generations of families. And I think it's important to have perspectives from all those people. So tonight, I want to ask you for your vote. Early voting opens on Friday, and then the election is on November 5th. Thank you very much.
So I'd like to have a few thank yous. I'd like to thank all the candidates for participating in the forum tonight and for participating in the democratic process by running for office. Thank you, League of Women Voters Bloomington, for organizing this forum, and thank you to Bloomington TV for video recording it. You can view this forum online, on the LWV Bloomington website, on the City of Bloomington website, and on YouTube, and on Bloomington Cable TV until Election Day. Thank you to the audience for attending tonight's forum, and please remember to vote on or before November 5th. Let's give the candidates a hand.